Okay Chairman, you can start.
Okay, good evening everyone. This is the zoning board of appeals for June 10th, 2020. We've got two items on the agenda this evening. Thirty-seven DeVos Street, which is a public hearing about constructing a rear yard deck on the property. And twenty-seven Main Street, and that is an appeal of the interpretation of the, of the building inspector. So first up, we'll have thirty-seven DeVos Street. Who would like to be heard in this application?
I see we had, yes, you raised your hand. Hold on one second. Laurel, can you hear us?
There we go. Okay. Yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm here representing Matthew Cordon Architecture for thirty-seven DeVos Street. We're adding a rear yard deck onto the house. And our preferred way of building this deck would encroach on the ten-foot side yard setback by a very minimal amount. Just it's kind of a diagonal cut along the side of the deck that is max one foot three. And by the time you reach the rear end of the deck, you're already within the, the setback. The reason we're doing this is because the client's dining room that they're at, they're exiting out of has, is really tight. And if we had to keep the deck within the setback, it would make for a really kind of tight odd configuration of the exit door onto the deck. The house is already, it existing non-conformity is already over the setback line. And we just want to keep the edge of the deck flush with the side of the house, and that's it.
Right. It's, this is a pretty straightforward application. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No.
No. And just for the public, I should state that the, the deck is atop a, what will become a storage area underneath that will be enclosed.
Yeah.
And, and so it's a little bit unusual that way. But, but nothing is unusual about this application. The house was built before the zoning code was in, in process. And so it was, it was not aligned, it was not set up with, with ten yard, ten-foot side yard setbacks. And this deck, you know, extends the non-conformity a little bit and then is, is conforming. But it, it would be a much more pleasing architectural look to build it as proposed with the variance. Is, is there anyone from the, from the audience that would like to speak? From the neighborhood?
No Chairman, the only other person is for the next application.
Okay.
And can we confirm all the notices that have been sent, just for the record?
Yeah, we sent them.
Okay. Thank you. I move to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Thank you Paul. I, I moved that the application be granted based on the plans submitted.
Aye.
Everyone in favor? We've got, we've got five eyes on that. And I should, I should note for you Jennifer, Mr. Capasso is our alternate. So he does not get to vote when we have a full staff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sure. Okay, the, the next item on our applicant, on our, on our agenda is twenty-seven Main Street. And this is a request for the zoning board of appeals to overturn the decision made by the building inspector to require a payment of $10,000 as a recreation fee for the proposed residential unit that will result from conversion of the existing commercial space to become a one-bedroom apartment located in the existing building at twenty-seven Main Street. Blah, blah, blah. Who will be heard in this application?
Raya, can you hear us?
Hello. Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Raya.
How are you? We had purchased this property, which it was, it used to be eight units and it was condemned. We renovated the building at great cost and lot of effort in this piece of divorce. And we created office space in lieu of the four units to accommodate our family needs. And at this time, we are planning, I'm planning to sell my house and move to Dobbs because I'm taking care of my mother and she lives with me. And my daughter already lives on twenty-seven Main Street. So we're going to be taking over her apartment. She's going to be, you know, moving to the one-bedroom that we are proposing. There has been no change of, you know, there is no enlargement, there is no, nothing. The only thing is we're just redistributing the office.
By redistributing the office, just to be clear, do you mean that one of the spaces that used to be an office space is now becoming a residential space?
Yes, the, the office was a duplex. So one was coming from this, you know, this sidewalk, the street level. And then there was a staircase going to a lower floor. So the only thing is we are eliminating that staircase going down and converting that space to a one-bedroom.
And will that include building bathroom, kitchen, things like that?
Yes, it's going to be a bathroom, you know, bathroom, a small kitchen. And because as I said, we are, we are restoring to previous that we had, you know, before it was our apartment.
Right.
But we converted to the office, now we are converting it back to their apartment.
So it was initially an eight residential unit building. And then the new CO though, and I gather this happened when you did your renovation work, that changed it to a four and two, right? Four residences, two offices.
Yes, yes.
And there was no CO that specified how many apartments was, the building was built prior to COs.
I see. So it was used as an eight, it was used as an eight-bedroom or an eight-unit, but there was nothing on paper?
According, according to the owner, yes.
Right. And, and what kicks in the recreation fee? Like what, what actually triggers that?
I sent you guys out the, the resolution. I got it from Liz that the Board of Trustees created several years ago, that anytime you create a new dwelling unit because of the village's need and, and the extra impact on parks and recreation, the village requires a $10,000 recreation fee to go into a fund that is reserved for building parks and recreational uses. So anytime you add a dwelling unit.
But this is not adding it to a dwelling. I can understand if you are, you were increasing it. If it is, if, if in two, three years, my, you know, the family things changes. I want to bring it back to the office. Are you then, is the town going to reimburse the $10,000? I mean, this is, this is, I don't think this is, I don't think this is fair. Because I, this building was a condemned building. And it was an eight-unit building. And we increased, we decreased the unit. And, you know, right now, this, this space was an apartment previously. But we took the, you know, we made it as a part of the office. Now we are converting it back to, you know, we are converting it back to a one-bedroom apartment.
Just.
I, I think the real issue here is, is what our authority is as the zoning board, which also turns on what the building department's authority is. Because whether or not we agree with the equities of what you're arguing in Mike, we can't just do things because we, we think it's the right thing to do. We have to have some legal power to do it. And so I guess the question I really have, actually, Mr. Manley, I don't believe I received
Yeah, we didn't.
the resolution. Can, can you read the, the Board of Trustees' resolution so that that'll be part of the record?
Okay, let me see. I gotta find that.
So as Mr. Manley is, is looking for that, I did go to the village code, which was cited. And if we turn to the village code under section three hundred fifty-two, which deals with site plan review. But then under the section J, reservation of parkland, subdivision two speaks of the dedication and reservation of parks. And what it speaks of is that each time there is a new dwelling unit, the Board of Trustees can require a payment in lieu of parkland shall be required for each new dwelling unit constructed in accordance with the Village of Dobbs Ferry code. So I guess to the applicant, the question is, why doesn't that apply? Since this is a new dwelling unit. But Ed, I do believe it's important for us to understand what does the resolution say? Because it's unclear when you read that code section as to whether or not the board has actually required it. It's not clear that every time a dwelling unit is added, that the board has said that she has to be.
The, the resolution does say that. It says anytime a dwelling unit is created that requires a permit, a building permit, a rec fee should be applied.
And. It, it says anytime for a building permit?
Anything, yes, anytime you create a new dwelling unit and under, under a project that requires a building permit.
Okay, yeah, because, because the code really says anytime it comes before the planning board or the Board of Trustees, it requires a payment.
Was that resolution made part of the law? Is there, or is, I'm not sure where that fits into the code. And is that something I, I don't know?
It was, it was a local law.
On the, on the screen for my fellow board members to see. Ed, if.
As soon as I find it, I don't know why. I just had a big problem with my wifi going down and trying to find that email from Liz Draper.
But my, my point is, when we purchased it, it was an eight-unit dwelling. And there is a, and that is what we had. That is what we purchased, eight units.
Could you just explain that further, what you mean? When you purchased it, it's now eight units.
Yes, when we purchased, when, when we purch, we purchased the twenty-seven Main Street, it was an eight-unit dwelling.
And how many dwellings will it have after you add that apartment back in?
We reduced that, right? We reduced it to two office space and four units. So the office unit that we were, we were occupying, right now, we want to convert that. One stays as office in the main street, the street level. And the one below that it was a duplex, that duplex becomes as a one-bedroom apartment. Even if we add this, we are not even up to what we purchased. If we add this unit to the building, to the CO, it is not, it is, it's not even up to where we purchased it.
And what year did you purchase it?
We purchased it, I believe, two thousand eleven, ten or eleven.
Okay.
And the fee, and this fee was, was in place at that stage?
I believe so. Yes, I, I believe so. I don't, you know.
So it, it wasn't at the time
It wasn't.
a legal eight, eight-family unit, whether or not it could have even been an eight-family unit. You know, we don't really know that. But a choice was made, I suppose, to not max it out in terms of residential, to, to, to decrease the amount of residential units and, and add up, I guess, a commercial unit or two. So a benchmark was set, it seems to me, at that, at that point, unfortunately.
Because right now, the business is not, as everybody knows, because of what, what has been happening. So the business is not there. And I always said, I have to sell my house. And my, you know, I have to move to twenty-seven Main Street because of the, because of the circumstances of my family. So that is where, where I am at.
So I think we're going for the same question Jeremy asked. We understand the situation. The question is, is there any discretion that this board has to not follow the Board of Trustees' language as written? Is there any discretion, in other words, to waive this particular requirement? Like we can sometimes with a side yard variance. I, I don't yet know, I don't, I've not yet heard that this is something we are authorized to take in action that circumvents the language that is written in the, like the materials that Ed has read to us.
Bruce, what, what it is, we are restoring one of the unit. It is not rebuilding or re, you know, just restoring one of the, you know, restoring one of the unit back to its original.
Now, I understand what you're saying, Raya. I, but I think what the, the way we may have to look at it is for the last decade, the last 10 years, it's functioned as four apartment units and office space. And now it's going to have five apartment units and office space. So, yeah. Concretely, we've increased the number of office units, decreased them of office units and increased the number of apartment units by one. Following the language that we've been talking about, that suggests that we have, that, that suggests that there's a requirement to pay a recreation fee. What I'm not aware of is whether we have the ability to give you an effect of variance from that requirement, like we gave the prior applicant a variance from a side yard requirement. It's clearly established, we could provide a variance for a side yard setback. It's not established, so we could.
So Bruce, let me just.
The whole thing is, there is not, there is nothing, you know, there is no enlargement, there is no effect to the character of the, you know, the, the space wise, you know what I'm saying? We are not increasing, adding something that intruding to the, you know, to the setback. Everything is existing. Everything is existing, except converting, you know, the office that was a duplex to as a one office upstairs and downstairs has a separate interest. And everything was a separate previously.
So. Well, the legal talent on the, on the board, I, I, I'm somewhat confused. Typically, we are governed by the code. And the code leaves this discretion to the Board of Trustees and the, and the planning board. Not, not.
I would frame it differently, Peter, if I can just interject and maybe Jeremy agree or disagree as our two lawyers.
Yeah.
Our authority is, is as an appellate body. So we sit here in making a determination as to whether or not the building department's decision is correct under the code. So it's, it's similar to when we are asked as to whether or not building department has correctly analyzed whether or not somebody sits within a particular zone. So here, our discretion is whether or not Ed is right in his interpretation of the building code. I speak to Ed, but really speaking of, of the, you know, building department. So that is where we sit. So we have to analyze the code and the resolution and see whether it applies to the circumstance. We do not have the discretion to vary or change the law. But we can make a determination that the interpretation of the law is incorrect.
Could I point out something about the, the code section itself? It says if the Board of Trustees and/or the planning board finds that no suitable parkland exists. So it seems that there is a prerequisite to applying this, that there be a finding by one of those boards before, before this fee can be applied. And whether or not, as a matter of fact, such a finding would be valid. A rec finding, things to me that procedurally, this requires a specific act and a finding by either the Board of Trustees or the planning board. So my reading of section three hundred point fifty-two, J two, is that the, the prerequisites for imposition of the fine haven't been met.
I read it the same way and then I wondered whether or not the resolutions that were referred to set that forth in some way.
Well, that, that would be the question. Does, does the building department have delegated authority to make that finding?
Or did the resolution that the Board of Trustees issued make that finding? I'm not sure what the resident.
It's a finding that relates to each particular site plan.
So. I, I guess the board could have made a determination that it applies anytime a new unit is added, not just each individual one. But I guess we need to see the resolution.
Because on this, what we, what we are proposing, there is no, there is no variance needed.
No, there's no variance needed. You're here for an interpretation.
Okay.
Ed, is this something that will go to the, to the planning board or to the?
It doesn't have to, because there's no engineering outside work, you know, dry wells or anything like that, structural work that needs to be done. And I am frustrated that somehow Liz's email with the attached resolution and local law is, is gone from my email. But it, it does, had it this morning. I forwarded it out to you guys and I don't know what happened to it. I can get it again tomorrow, but you know, that doesn't help much. And it does state that, you know, any new dwelling created that requires a building permit shall pay a rec fee.
But isn't it the new dwelling is something that is, you know, structurally, it's going to get built?
No. No, a dwelling unit is a dwelling unit. Whether you, if it has a kitchen, bathroom and living space, it's a dwelling unit. So if you take two large dwelling units, break them up with a wall in between and add other kitchens, then you now have four dwelling units. And that's adding a dwelling unit. That's adding two dwelling units.
So if I'm a, if I'm a condominium owner in this district, I have a large apartment. I decide I want to divide that apartment into two apartments. I want to own both of them as part of that application. I have to pay this fee.
Yes. And those fees have been charged to every new dwelling unit since I've been in the building department.
I mean, I, I would probably, I, I'm not sure, Bruce, if the question you were asking was in fact the question that's in front of us. It maybe more seems like the question is whether or not we think Ed's determination was incorrect. I mean, that's how I'm reading the charge, whether or not we agree with Ed's determination.
That is why I sent them here, because they disagreed with me and didn't want to pay the fee. And I said, and she asked, what is my alternative? I said, the only alternative is to get an opinion from the ZBA whether I've interpreted this correctly.
Does she have recourse to the Board of Trustees if, if, if this vote doesn't go her way?
No, you are the, the final board that determines whether I've interpreted correctly.
Is it an appeal in court after this? There's, the board has no discretion over this. As I read the code, no authority to review the building inspector's determinations.
Right. And John, to your question, yes, I would agree with you. It's not, as I initially wondered, whether we had the ability to provide relief because we did not think it was, because we thought it was a minor modification. It's not like we're just being asked, has Ed read it correctly or not read it correctly?
Yeah. We have a lot more latitude when it's determining a variance. We have criteria we can look at.
Yeah.
A little, a little less, it's a little less forgiving, seems to me.
This gets more towards strictly legal side as opposed to our more architectural planning side.
So I, I think we need to adjourn this until we've actually, I don't think we can pass on the interpretation of a, a resolution that we haven't.
Can I interject for one second? I'm sorry, guys. Um, I have it. Ed, do you want me to share my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Liz just sent it to us. Just tell me where to go, Ed, because I don't know where it is.
So it's just the extreme right of the sentences on my screen are covered by the, the participants' pictures. Yeah, there you go. That's good.
I'm able to minimize that.
There you go. So scroll up a little bit, right. There's a local law. So being enacted by the Board of Trustees is filed amendments of building construction to add regulations regarding park or playground fees for any new residential development for which a building permit is required. Chapter one to twenty-seven Building Construction of Balsory Village Code is hereby amended to be adding section E to reservation of parklands findings, the provisions of adequate park and recreational facilities for both active and passive recreational pursuits by existing and future residents of the village is necessary and appropriate for their health, safety and well-being. New residential development will create an additional demand for both active and passive recreational facilities. And areas and new facilities and areas will need to be established to meet the needs of residents occupying dwelling units that will be built after enacted hereof. Scroll up, please. It is fair and appropriate that the new development be borne substantially or entirely by developers of new residential properties. Dedication and reservation of parklands and open spaces in order to meet the new demand on recreational facilities, lands suitable suitable for recreational park use by the residents of the Village of Dobbs Ferry or payment in lieu thereof. If the building inspector finds that no suitable park land exists on the parcel, shall be required for each new dwelling unit constructed. Any monies required by the building inspector in lieu of land for park, playground or other recreational purposes pursuant to the provisions of this section shall be deposited in a village trust fund to be used by the village exclusively for park, playground or other recreational purposes, including the acquisition of property. Such, scroll up, please. Such payments shall, shall be a condition of any building permit approval and shall be assessed in accordance with fees scheduled established under chapter one seventy-five fees in the village code. No certificate of occupancy shall be granted by the village until such payment has been received by the village and receipt thereof provided. and receipt thereof provided to the Board of Trustees. Notwithstanding the foregoing provisions, if the land included as part of a new residential development requiring a building permit has previously assessed the recreation fee under a site plan or subdivision approval, the building inspector shall credit the applicant with any land set aside or money donated in lieu thereof under such subdivision approval. In the end of every subdivision of such plat or major amendment to the site plan, nothing shall preclude the additional reservation of parkland or money donated in lieu thereof. Rebuilding, replacing or expanding residential development which previously existed shall be exempt from any parkland set aside or recreational fee unless the rebuilding, replacement or expansion results in an increase in number of dwelling units.
Jennifer, could you come a little bit more so we can read the definition of dwelling unit?
You want me to scroll in, zoom in?
That's good. So it's 10,000 and then dwelling unit, any room or group of rooms located within a residential building and forming a single habitat unit containing living, cooking, sanitary and sleeping facilities.
So I guess, and while we were looking and I did check that 127.6 was amended, this section is included if we look into the code under Section 127.6. That same resolution is now part of the code.
And does the unit that we're talking about have living, cooking, sanitary and sleeping facilities?
So that'd be a kitchen, bathroom and bedroom.
Right. Because we don't have, I don't believe we have a floor plan of the unit. So I guess the question is.
The answer is yes, it will contain those items.
The unit that is being added will contain those elements.
Yeah.
Yes.
But the whole thing is, it all throughout this, when you were reading it, it says all new residence, new building. This is, this is not, this is not new. This is renovating, this is interior renovation.
And in the chapter where it said, under building permits, any new dwelling unit. So.
So if tomorrow I change this one back to, I'm sorry, Ed, if tomorrow we change this, right? If I change the whole bidding to residential, I have to pay $20,000, $30,000? I mean, this is, this is.
That's true. That is true.
I disagree. I'm so sorry, I disagree because to me, new residential is something that up the street, they build the whole building residential. There are so many new building facility and this is.
And they all pay fees.
This was about eight years ago. This is about eight, I mean, we purchased it, it took, it took a while because we were trying to, you know, do, get involved with what the, with the parking and all other stuff that they were going to, there was a development for, I guess, something was with the county, we were involved with that. They were going to make it affordable housing. That's what they took from 2010 to 2012, finally 2012. We start building, you know, we got the permit, we start building.
But the time it took you to get your approvals doesn't matter here. It said it would be excluded if you were already assessed the recreation fee under another approval. You were never assessed the recreation fee.
And she was not assessed the recreation fee because, I mean, is it, is it fair to say that the benchmark back then, even though it wasn't on paper, even though it wasn't the quote unquote illegal eight unit dwelling, that eight was the benchmark that it would have been assessed at? If she, if she did make the building into eight units, she would be assessed nothing because she actually did not increase it over an existing condition, be it documented or not.
Why it wasn't assessed back then, I don't know. What I do know is once you change a building, it is now what it is on that CO. And then when you change it again, it becomes something else.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I ask only because the past does matter as I'm reading it, right? Meaning like if she, if she made the change and she made a payment, then that, that she doesn't have to pay the payment twice.
If she had been, if she had been assessed the recreation fee, then she couldn't be again for, unless she added more than she already paid for.
And it's probably fair to assume that she wasn't paid, she wasn't charged the fee last time because she didn't increase the number of dwelling units, I guess compared to eight.
Yes.
And can it, it cannot get grandfathered because it was eight. Now it is, you know, it's going, it's not even, even going to be eight. It's going to be five and two office space.
Well, what did the previous certificate of occupancy, before, before the applicant took ownership?
I don't believe there was one. I didn't find one.
It was, we purchased it from a town of Greenberg. And based on the, what the cut sheet they had, it was an eight, eight family unit.
That was, that was the tax roll, the tax assessment. No CO.
Jeremy, the question to some extent is, could she have banked the other units? Even though she didn't make them, right? She was at four, she changed it to, and she was at eight. Unofficially, she went down to four. She wasn't able to take those four and put her in her back pocket and keep them for a later date. She reset it, she reset the property. And she set a new benchmark, you know, a new.
That's the way I see it.
I mean, that's, that's a reading of it. I mean, I don't, I don't know if we feel like there's, you know, a different reading there, but that's, that's, that's what it boils down to.
I guess I'm interested in if there's some ambiguity about whether, whether in fact, what she's planning to do creates what we can call new dwelling units, a new dwelling unit. If the reality is, there were once eight dwelling units there and there are now fewer dwelling units, the spirit of these provisions of enacted by the Board of Trustees doesn't seem to call for a payment there. The whole idea of this, of this code provision is to compensate for the fact that you're adding residents. And if in fact, there's no addition of residents overall, it does seem out of keeping with the purpose of the law.
It's an interesting point, Jeremy. We've let Joe be quiet, we can get his opinion. Joe, but if he can vote, well. You can use your legal degree every once in a while.
I mean, I circle back Paul to your earlier comments. It's not for the lawyers on the board to try to read into what's written in the code. It's literally a question of whether or not we agree with Ed's determination and whether Ed's determination is reasonable, that the fee is due and should be paid. And I come down on the side of Ed's read of the statute and his determination that the fee is due and payable is a reasonable determination. And I agree with his, I agree with Ed's conclusion.
Yes, well, Ed, I know that when it comes to certain applications that come before us, there's a hardship waiver and there's some provision in the code. I don't know where it is where the board can grant waivers, meaning the Board of Trustees, not us. Are you familiar with any provision that would allow the applicant to go to the Board of Trustees and ask for a waiver of this fee?
Historically, I don't, can't think of anything like that. I, I do believe under site plan, when Danforth apartments came before, at River Town Square, came before the Board of Trustees and there was 202 new units, I think they did reduce that fee, if I remember correctly. So maybe that's a precedent.
I'm sensitive to Jerry's, to Jeremy's, where you were going, Jeremy. And so far as, in 2013, the law was already passed in 2011. And at that time, there were eight units there. They were servicing eight units. And she chose to decrease that and unwittingly reset, reset the clock to some extent against her favor. And she didn't get, she didn't, she wasn't compensated in any way. The code doesn't provide for that. She's just trying to get back to the eight. It's unfortunate.
But the whole thing is, this is, you said, this is an interior renovation, has nothing to do with outside, the outside existed. Everything existed.
I don't, I don't think this says anything.
Everything is going to be, three walls are going to be installed. So there is no, everything is existing. The only thing is, is an interior partition wall.
Roya, that would not be your strongest argument. Because you look at Yoshianna Publications Building, you know, where you had a publishing house and other commercial interests. You know, by interpretation of that code, when they created the co-opted condominiums that they had there, they were creating new units within an existing structure and they would have been required to pay a fee. I think the points that Jeremy and Paul are raising is the point where we may have some room. Just the fact that it was a one time, I mean, it's really the question of, is it a hardship? And as a hardship, can there be a body, if it's not our body, the Board of Trustees, that can provide some relief for you?
I appreciate it. In any relief, as everybody knows with this COVID-19 and what has impacted everybody's household, I would appreciate that in any way, you know, you, you, you know, your department can help me out.
Peter, I don't know what, is there ability, do we have an ability to refer this to the Board of Trustees? And, you know, with a recommendation that while the interpretation by the letter of the law that Ed did is correct, we feel by the spirit of the law that there maybe could be some relief provided to the applicant. I don't know if we have that ability to have that kind of.
I'm not sure that we have that ability, but you know, if, you know, unfortunately, I don't think we have a lot of wiggle room as to what we can do.
Right.
I think the applicant probably could, could appeal to the Board of Trustees or the Planning Board because these circumstances are, are unique. And I don't think are encompassed by the spirit of the law. But.
I, I think we could defer a decision and for some reasonable period of time to allow a petition to the board to be made, to the Board of Trustees.
I think that would be the only thing we would have to adjourn. Keep this application open, not make a determination and see whether the board wanted to issue a special resolution. Because back to Joseph and others have said, I think on a strict letter of the law.
There's no room to wiggle here.
No room, yeah.
Yeah.
The only, I would not be against just leaving it open and returning in some time period. I, I don't know what that procedure would be to go to the board.
I can see if I can get it on the Board of Trustees as a request for hardship relief.
I really appreciate it.
And then they'll send it, their decision back to you. Does that sound right?
To me, it does.
Yeah.
I think so.
Would they have the final say or would we, we have to make a decision as well?
I suppose they could waive it, but you know, I mean, it's really.
Yeah, and if they waive it, then the applicant can withdraw from us.
You could make a decision tonight that you agree with my interpretation of the law, but you believe that the Board of Trustees would have the power to waive the requirement.
I don't know if they have that power. And the problem is, once we make a decision, applicant's time to go to court starts clicking. So I would suggest we leave the application open a short period of time, see what the board wants to do and the applicant can withdraw if the board agrees. Because otherwise, our decision will be, you know, final.
Right.
Good.
Can I make a motion to adjourn the hearing, but not close it? And.
And should we, should we see if anyone else wants to be heard on the application?
We have no other attendees.
No other attendees? Okay, thank you.
Do you know when the Board of Trustees will meet?
Board of Trustees meets the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, July and August, only once a month, so the second Tuesday. So I have to see when they will put you on the agenda and will notice you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for your time, for everybody's time.
Okay, so move to adjourn this application and move to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone. Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you all.